7:01, I call the meeting to order and the first order of business is general business. So, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes?
Yeah.
Yes. I didn't find it was typo and I tried following. So, do I hear a vote for you to move to accept the minutes? So, my last meeting, I hear second, sir. Any discussion? Here we no discussion? Is this what we do the vote?
Yep.
Okay. Margaret?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Tommy?
Hi.
Say aye, so it's unanimous. Second issue of business is the treasures report. Did you get anything, Ken?
I don't think anything has changed.
There's been no changes. I did follow up with Ken today. I forwarded him to the escrow accounts that we have open currently for the two ongoing applications. But obviously, nothing's changed as a result of those. And it's going to be with Ken on Thursday to discuss treasure stuff and my general planning board business as well.
Are we paying anybody yet?
Oh, we are not paying anybody.
Okay.
Out of planning board money. Everything, every, everything's being paid out of the escrow accounts, which is paid from the applicants.
Okay, I just didn't know if Grace was being paid out of.
No, she's being paid out of general planning board.
Yeah, that's what I meant, general planning board.
Yeah.
And we still have money left in that account?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Well, I can, I can update that and that's probably a good thing to do. But we'll go over that on Thursday with Ken. We'll provide an update on those accounts next time around.
Okay, and that money goes away at the end too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, or it starts all over again.
Okay, so do we still have time to? Send it back or you just automatically go back?
It automatically gets replenished.
Okay.
You know what I mean, so.
But if there's money left in the account?
Then they add less.
They add less, okay. 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 And then the third item was the planners' report?
So, I've been in contact with the people over at the Bank of America ATM. They are getting new lighting in that ATM, ATM and around the ATM. So, nothing that would trigger, obviously, site plan review, but I thought it'd just make you aware because they're going to be adding a couple new light poles. I think it was just two light poles. So, I made them follow up with me to give me a luminaire plan to show the potential light pollution that would spill over onto adjacent properties. So, but reviewing that plan, there was, there was no concern of anything like that. So, that they'll, they'll be getting some new lights over there at some point.
Okay.
ZBA voted to approve Governor's Landing for their special permit for the townhouses at their last meeting. So, I'm working on the decision document for that. Just a couple of conditions on that. I should have made note of what the conditions were, but they weren't anything.
Hours in operation and sound barrier, right?
I don't know. She's talking government.
Oh, Governor's Landing, I thought talking the other one. Nevermind.
Let me bring those up real quick because that's worth noting. It's nothing that would impact design for planning board purposes when, when you hear the, this application next? Here we go. That the homeowners association through its HUA rules and covenants explicitly allow for passive and active recreational uses in the designated common open space areas. And that adequate sewerage and water utilities be provided to the site in connection to the utilities that the town intends to construct along Milford Street once those utilities are in place. So, those are the two conditions for that. And so, obviously, they'll be further restricted potentially should, should any approval be granted through this board and be looking to add conditions that I imagine. Obviously, would be my suggestion as well. The ZBA also voted to approve the Garner Girls Sawmill, which is down the road on Main Street. Getting the exact address, 162A, I want to say. But right there on Glen Avenue and Main Street.
Was that a special permit?
Yeah, it was a special permit, as I recall through this board. It was the recommendation that they proceed with a special permit for light manufacturing within the CNI district. So, that is what they, that's what they proceeded with. There was quite the crowd in this little room for, for that. So, but we had a number of, I think it was a total of three written letters of support for them, as well as there were a few folks in the room to express their support. And then the rest were, you know, neighbors along Glen Ave who were not enthusiastic about it. But that was approved and working on the decision document for that soon.
And that had conditions?
They had conditions that, thank you, that was, I believe the conditions were, I don't have them written yet, but it was occupying the sawmill use from nine to five. And, but allowing for trucks to come and go from the site seven to seven. Those were the two, or just the only condition really.
Wasn't there a condition on the building something around it?
I'll have to look back.
I don't know if they officially did.
There was, there was some discussion about constructing a lean-to or something like that, but I don't know if that made it into the actual motion. Yeah, I'll have to look into that. Like I said, I don't have that written down yet, but I have Amy going over that, that, Amy Bonina, going over the meeting to do the minutes. So, we'll get an accurate accounting of what the motion was on that.
It's a hard meeting to do minutes on.
I did my best in the room to try and take as many notes as possible to make the minutes go a little bit easier for her. We'll, I had something on East Street Estates, but we'll get to that because that's not an agenda item. They requested a continuance. And the last thing was, we are approved for $30,000 through the Mass Community Planning Grant Program. That was a grant that I had submitted, that I had talked to this board about a couple of times already. For technical assistance with the MBTA Communities Compliance, as well as getting an inclusionary zoning bylaw feasibility study completed through that. So, my hope is that $30,000 will be able to account for both of those things. It's about my experience that doing inclusionary zoning feasibility study, I know, cost $16,000 last time I did it. And that was only like three years ago. So, I imagine it's gone up a little bit in price and so I can use the remainder of the funds to put into technical assistance to getting this board, some assistance with the, whether it be writing bylaw language for the MBTA communities. Or if it's just helping us out with community outreach with regard to that or anything else that really we put together on that interim action, interim compliance action plan that we submitted. So, we'll be getting some help for that. Still waiting, I confirmed with now formerly DHCD, now livable communities.
Housing and livable communities.
Department of Housing and Livable Communities. I confirmed with them that it was okay with me to share that information with you today because we are within the same organization. They didn't want the town to do any press releases regarding that grant funding. So, anyway, just a technicality sort of thing, but I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that so we're all on the same page going forward. So, I expect to have a, an agreement executed with them to receive the grant funds by the end of this week. And I don't know exactly when I will see the grant funds given, but I expect I'll be working on an RFD to solicit consultants probably above the end of July. And that was it.
Any questions? Any comments? Okay, so we'll move on to the next item in the agenda, which is a discussion on VFW and community center parking. So, do you want to introduce and then?
Do you want to do, do you want to continue East Street Estates first?
Oh, I'm just, we have East Street Estates second on the agenda.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Oh, to get switched around? Oh, sorry. Okay. Which one are we doing first? Is it the zoning map change for the solar?
No, it's parking, I think. Yeah, the discussion on VFW and community center parking.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll hand this over to, we have David Kennedy present from the VFW. He wanted to discuss potential parking spaces.
Right.
Behind the VFW, I think near snack shack or something.
Widening the thing so that it could be nosed in parking instead of parallel parking. And adding, that and itself would add about five spaces. Now, I was told off the record that they also needed two more handicap spots for the ball field.
I think, I think Dennis, you want? He might just walk.
Good evening. How is everyone tonight?
Good. Good, how are you?
So, Madam Chair, if it pleases the committee, I'll give a brief update that'll kind of blend into what Mr. Kennedy is speaking of. Because there's a few items to discuss. Thank you. So, like anything, when you build it, you realize after you build it and you use it for a little while, there are some things that we probably could have done a little different. Or maybe we should have considered a little different and the community centers is no different from that. And then after having the building open for a couple of months and utilizing the parking and the building itself, several different boards in town and the directors that work there have brought some items to our attention that we needed to discuss at the last building committee meeting. And inclusive was some comments from the police chief, comments from the library director and the council on aging director and the town manager, Joseph Layden. And I'll go through the items, Madam Chair, for the whole committee. So, first and foremost, for some safety concerns from the fire, fire and police chief about the entrance and exit of the parking lot. Now, these comments are not that different than the comments that were made by Mastot when the project applied for the curb cut. It was recommended by Mastot, but not mandated, that the engineers take a look at making a one-way in and either a one-way or two-way out. And I, I couldn't explain why it wasn't done, but it wasn't done. And after looking at it now, it seems quite apparent that it would be a much safer entrance and exit if the closest entrance to the community center became an entrance only. And that the second entrance closest to the VFW became both, an entrance and an exit. And this is achievable with paint and signs, not creating any islands or putting structures in there. This would be something that would be engineered on a design and then put before Mastot for approval. And it would adjust the entrance and exit so that it would be more conforming, in my opinion, and safer for vehicles entering and exiting the parking lot. Another item that came up were folks that were visiting the council on aging side. And I hope everyone's had a chance to visit the building. It is a beautiful building and it is a tight fit. And, and that's where we ran into some hurdles with the parking. As folks visit the community center and they want to go to the council on aging side, they tend to park on that side. But the handicap entrance is on the other side by the playground. So, we're finding our seniors are walking all the way down to the curb cut to get onto the sidewalk, to walk all the way back to the council on aging entrance to get into the building. And it's, it's, it's tough on them. Some of them try to park closest to the entrance, so they walk straight across, but they have a six-inch curb reveal sitting in front of them that they have to get over with either their cane or their walker. Or some of them are in wheelchairs or some of them just have a tough time negotiating steps like that. So, we, we are going to consider looking at adding another curb cut. I see Michael's got the plan up. It would be, if you look at the first entrance, it would be before it gets to the radius that cuts into the building, right there where the plantings are, there would be a curb cut. So that people visiting the council on aging could get up on the curb without having to go all the way down by the playground. I don't know if that's apparent to everybody, but that's one of the things that we're, we're considering.
Through the chair, if I can anchor up for a minute, Dennis, let me ask a couple of questions before I forget these things.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah, at my age, my memory, I got to ask them quick before I forget them. Can you include in this what you believe we should send out to be reviewed by a peer review? I mean, I understand that we're going to look at it and DOTs will look at it, but we've had a, a peer review on this the entire time and what rises to the level of that changing, changing.
I don't believe, I, I don't believe you would need a peer review. What's going to be done is a, is a simple recommendation from NISH that is going to incorporate the town's request to add some, some handicap parking spots, to maneuver a couple of spots around to create a curb cut on that piece of concrete closest to the entrance to the council on aging. And Mastot will review the two curb cuts.
And you don't think you need any backup from, from the planning board's engineer or reviewing engineer? You don't need any backup to help you with this?
No, it needs to go in front of the planning board without a doubt. It needs a vote of the planning board, but I don't believe it needs any review. The main parking lot is going to stay as it is. We're talking about just changing a couple parking spaces to add more spaces.
Well, for us, for us, it's actually pretty simple. It's either minor change that we catch it on the ASBelt or it's a major change and we have to hold the site plan for it. We, that's something that we'd have to describe and don't know if we're there yet. And the other thing was, we asked the, at 85 parking spaces, there was three handicapped. And those, I know we put in our review or in our requirements that those had to meet both the state and the federal guidelines for properly placing those three. Have, have we got the reviewing okay from the state on this and the federal government or wherever it is, the federal review?
We had, it's not a federal view. It's, it's basically you had a professional engineer stamp and certify that it meets ADA and Architectural Access Board requirements. And it was accepted by, yeah, and it was accepted by Pat Roach as the building inspector. And there are still a couple of hiccups though included in this, which I was going to get to in a moment, but.
Well, we asked, you can check our, maybe Mike could check our, our decision, but we didn't ask for just that. We asked for an actual letter from the, because we've had so many issues with both, with, with the Architectural Access Board in town. We asked for something from them saying that they're, it's okay with them. We didn't get that.
No, because the Architectural Access Board answers complaints. They don't generally, I mean, we had a local, we had a local advocate that works, is kind of a liaison with the AAB and local towns. And he came down and did a complete report on the entire facility and provided that. And he had some recommendations in there and that's all that came out of it was recommendations, which we are, which we are following, Tom.
But the planning board's approval was based on having three handicap spots. I still don't see those.
There, yeah, there was three.
Okay, and if, as long as it's close enough to the building. So, we're moving this convenience, not for compliance, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, there are, there are two compliance issues. But first, I want to answer your question about the parking spots. So, up next to the corner where the playground is, there are three handicap parking spots right there. And then behind it in the very first row by the hash marks is a van accessible handicap parking spots. So, there are four in this parking lot right there.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wondered, clients, or we're just making, because they've tried it and it's just not convenient to do that. So, we're going to move it for, for the better for the people who use it.
We're not going to move them.
Correct, we're going to do a second one?
Right, so, one of the, one of the, one of the items that came up from some of the local advocates was, it would be nice if we had some ADA parking on the other side where you first come in to the parking lot where we're talking about changing the entrance. And that's where we're talking about the folks who visit the council on aging. So, we're looking to add two handicap parking, take two of the existing parking spots that are closest, as close as we can get depending on grades to the electrical connection there and make two of them ADA parking. And not do away with any of the others, so this would be in addition to. And in doing so, because of the width of the ADA, we'll actually lose one spot. So, there's a net loss of one parking spot by doing two additional ADAs, but we have an idea on how to make up for that. The, the two issues that we have through the chair, if I may, the two issues that are outstanding for the parking lot for meeting compliance is, on the VFW side, if you've been to the parking lot, you'll see that there are two handicap signs that are on portable posts. They have yellow bases with wheels on them at the bottom so that they can be moved around easy for snow plowing. That was the thought. Those are technically not in compliance. They need to be permanently affixed to the parking lot and that is going to happen. The reason it hasn't happened yet is because we have asked engineers to come back in and assist us with taking a look at these spots and adding a couple more ADA spots. And then looking at some other spots that Mr. Kennedy just alluded to and maybe perhaps making a few more parking spots down by the baseball field. So, the second thing is where the van drop-off is. The hash marks are, they're designed correctly. There's supposed to be eight feet for the, for the van to drop off, but I think the line company messed up with their measurement and they're a foot and a half short. It's, there's plenty of room there to add the extra hash mark, it's just not there, so that paint needs to be corrected.
So, where is the drop-off spot, Dennis? Is the drop-off spot towards the playground? Is that the big, yeah, the big, yeah, the big space there? Okay, so that's where you drop off the seniors?
So. No. The seniors.
In front of this, that, that's a parking for, for the van, right?
Right. Where, where you see, Michael has just highlighted the blue area, that is where the van pulls in and drops off.
That's what I thought, okay.
And then, and then goes and parks.
And they park there, so it's not a drop-off area, it's just a parking area. Okay, cool.
And then you can see over where the van typically parks permanently, there is a spot labeled van right next to it. And that is an ADA compliant van drop-off. It is the hash mark next to it that is, it was drawn correctly, it was engineered correctly, it wasn't painted correctly. It's a foot and a half shy of meeting compliance. And we know that. And it's going to be corrected. So, the other items that we have asked NISH to look at, and we're, we're going to finalize the contract hopefully tomorrow and the town manager will sign it, is down by the field. You'll notice that there is parking along the playground side, but on the opposite side, there are, there is some parking and then it turns into hash marks with one parallel park. And the reason for that is, is that, that area right there actually narrows. It's not the same width from corner to corner. So, we asked NISH to take a look at what it would take to either steal a foot on either side or a couple of feet on one side to square that off and make it so we could add additional parking there. And I'm trying to recall if there was any other items that we asked NISH to. Several things we asked them to put in their proposal, the two, the two entrances, adding two ADA compliant parking spots closest to the council on aging, adding a curb cut to the concrete walkway by the council on aging for folks to get up on the sidewalk much easier. Yes, that's exactly where it would be. And, and then we have the correction that we have to make with the two signs that are portable right now, that are technically not legal. They're not, they're not allowed to be portable. They have to be secured in the ground. And the van accessible location parking area needs to have an eight-foot drop-off and it's, I believe it's six and a half feet painted. So, that's got to be corrected. And then the last item we asked them to look at was creating some additional parking down by the field.
Addition to the three spaces that are going to be addition to what you just talked about?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is that consistent with what you were looking for, Dave?
Well, yeah, the, you see where the hash marks are up here?
Yeah.
There's a telephone pole about two feet in, three feet in.
Yeah.
So, if they widen this one, the telephone pole is going to be right there. And they're going to go up to the pole and they have more grassy area than the playground. But we were proposing, they just added on this side. And that would, you know, cure the distance and that, that could be a hash mark this way. So, by adding a three feet here, but the slight slope they got there, they could grade that off and add enough distance so to square, not really square it out, but they're the same distance for the whole parking lot. Instead of going on to the other side where it's a in-ground sprinkler system and everything on that, in that grassy area up to the snack shack, the whole area is sprinkled. So, we just proposed, and where it's already rough ground there anyway, just scoop that up three feet and come toward the playground. And that would give the distance that you need to have the regular dry-in and park-in or back-in park-in.
There's nothing there now?
There's nothing, well, it's just, do see, a part of it is seen, a part of it hasn't even seen it yet.
So, we. Yeah.
For clarification, we, we asked NISH to look at both sides and whatever is least intrusive is the one that would be the recommendation. And it could be a combination of a little bit on both sides or it could be all on one side or the other. And it all depends on slope. On the side towards the playground, that is already a steep slope. So, if you come in a couple of feet on that side, you may be looking at a retaining wall there.
Okay, just one quick question. Dennis, if everything engineers out the way you think it's most likely to, what's the net change in spots?
It'll be an addition.
One or two?
No, it'll be, it'll be, would be adding, well, we'll have the new, the two new handicap, which will lose, will, you'll have a, a net loss of one regular parking spot. But down by the field, we would probably gain another six.
Okay, so about, about a net five is what you're hoping for, net, net positive five?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, Lynn, you have your hand up?
Yes, through the chair. My question is, and I've gone over this with Dennis. So, the handicap parking spaces, because the senior center is open at different hours, those two spaces, that takes care, takes care of that 100 feet away from the opening of a building. Now, where you need like a, I believe it was suggested that you needed a parking space near the ball field for, for like a view, a view of the ball field, an accessible space. Because the two handicap spaces with the dongles are the movable, that's 100 feet away from the entrance of that facility. But over towards the ball field where you're adding spaces, are you planning on adding a view of the ball field with an accessible space over there with this plan?
Are you asking me that question, Lynn?
Yeah, through the chair, I'm trying to figure.
Yeah.
Through the chair, can I answer?
Through the chair, yeah.
So, I don't know the answer to that, Lynn, because we've asked NISH to come up with ideas for us. And all this is, is conceptual. It's going to be a, a plan that we anticipate will come back and it'll give the town an opportunity to look at probably a couple of different design options that will need to be worked out with the VFW because it includes their property and we have a shared parking law agreement already. So, there would be quite a few sitting at that table just on those discussions. And then if, if everyone there comes in agreement with something, it would go forward to the planning board for approval. But I couldn't answer the question.
Could you ask, as one of the options, whether it was, you know, when NISH looks at it, is it possible to make a space that would have a view of the ball field there?
I can ask them, yeah, sure.
Yeah, in what form would it be coming to the planning board?
Well, we, through the chair, Tom, we, we would need, the, the board would need an updated site plan. And I believe it would have to be determined whether the changes would either be minor in, in, in nature or, or not pursuant to your site plan regulations. Am I, am I correct in that?
Well, I'm hearing less than 10 parking spaces. I'm, I'm not hearing any building additions. I'm not hearing yet what's triggering the planning board review of, of a change.
Review of the ASBelt though, right?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, what, what if we would be calling, what, what would we be doing?
We would be determining whether or not this is a minor, whether or not this is actually a minor change, right? So, they'll come in and they'll say, this is the proposal and we'll say, okay, it's a minor change and that'll be it. Unless they, unless they come in and say, here's, we're adding 20 spaces and new lighting.
But I think I'm with Tom. I mean, if it's not that, it probably, this doesn't. But I think I'm with Tom. I mean, if it's not that, it probably this doesn't trigger site plan review would be reviewing it within the confines of the existing review.
Yes.
Right? Is that what you meant, Tom?
Yeah, that's it.
Now, question, um, this involves a reopening of the shared parking agreement, correct?
Well, it would definitely require um. A conversation with the VFW to consider that. I don't know. If we would have to open up the agreement or if we would just have to. It there's a lot depends on what the option is going to be. You know, the our main goal was. Our main goal was to address the two entrances, the two handicap additional parking spots and the curb cut. And if we can do something for adding some more parking, because I know both the VFW and the community center would benefit from it. I've seen the parking lot on evenings when there's been an event at the VFW. The Little League field was there and the library was open and that parking lot is full. So I and people are parked, quite frankly, in some spots that are not even parking spots. So I know it would be a benefit. Um, but we have to see how it comes out with the engineers. I have to see what their proposal is. Otherwise, it's pure speculation.
David, does this process work as far as you're concerned?
Um, yeah. Like you said, it would benefit both, especially in the spring when the ball. Fields are playing, but we asked them to start to work with. The main problem was that one day we had a flea market. Two ball games were being played, two more ball games were scheduled before the first ones were done. And there was a book sale. And it just overwhelmed everybody.
There's also the plant sale too, right?
What's that?
There's a plant sale too, right? I think.
Well, well, that was part of the yacht sale. But I mean, most of the people that we have for the flea markets are parked on the front lawn.
Yeah.
So that wasn't really the issue was the ball field. With two games going on and all the parents coming in for the next one before the first ones left. So we asked them to. Separate give an hour between.
Yeah.
For next, the new normal is in May. Uh, May or April, the uh, most of the games are played now, right now, this time of year, if they're all done.
And is that the revised parking? Is that on the land that's under the jurisdiction of the VFW or is it on?
I think is this the uh, the property line here? That hash mark that goes across?
Oh, yeah, you're probably right.
Yeah. So this whole area is VFW, that ball field parking. I believe that's that bond bondy line, but I didn't realize it was that far over even. I knew what I used to read, but.
It's hard to tell in this plan because there's so many lines, but you're probably right.
As I recall, that was because why no, we have four hundred and sixty feet frontage. And when we saw that entrance way, I says, come on, we have four hundred and sixty. Yeah, we got such a small entrance.
And Lynn, just to clarify, none of this triggers ADA, correct?
Oh, I don't know.
Well, Dom, I asked you, Lynn.
That that's an argument that, um, to answer your question, um. That's an argument I've been having or debate I've been having in furnishing um. Code enforcement with the information because, as I said. It as opposed, so Mass Architectural Access Board, that comes under Mass Building Code. ADA is federal office. And the federal ruling, it's. Um, handicap parking space is a hundred feet um, away from the opening of our building. So. I guess the best way to explain it that I'm trying to explain it to everyone and and Mike, Michael that's there is um. Picture yourself in a parking lot. You're down in Bellingham at Walmart. There's a Walmart with the handicap spaces. Then there's, you know, another building. There. And where the library and the senior center has different hours. That was, you know, to have the two handicap spaces there. And counting in the two handicap spaces that um. Are in front of the VFW, they're really not account, in my opinion, for the. For the space for the community center. And the community center is kind of divided two entities with different hours. Then you have the the ball field is some is something else. So it's.
And that was the one I was I was wondering if the ball fields. You know, if anything at the ball fields, the addition of those parking spaces would do anything for ADA.
There there's no tr- there we haven't. There haven't been enough money spent, Dennis, you could correct me, but um. As far as the VFW side of the facility, they haven't done the constructions that would trigger. Having to make things accessible, like an accessible route to the ball field. But an access, it it's kind of like Kiwanis. You have um, an upper gravel parking lot. That has a view, an accessible view of the field. And we want to kind of stay along. Along those guidelines. We want to not include everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any? Okay, so Dennis, one more question. Timeline, um, you said you're hoping to sign the contract tomorrow? And when?
Well, the gentleman that's working for niche that is on this is he actually lives right here in town. Uh, which is convenient. So this would probably turn be turned around. I will I will say this, they have to do, they have to come out and do some spot elevations. Because the question's going to be really for the two additional handicaps parts that we want to make closest to the. The council on aging side. It's making grade for the parking. That's going to be tough. And I can I can tell. With the naked eye that the the two spots closest to the very to the road, the closest ones don't make grade. It's probably going to have to be three or four spots in. But without putting a transit on that, I couldn't tell you for sure. And that's something that they're going to have to do. They're going to have to come out and take some spot elevations. So I would imagine this will be a few weeks.
That's it?
That that's probably about average.
And they're going to have to do that on the VFW parking as well, correct?
Absolutely. But they don't have to map out the they already have most of this on. Remember, they designed this parking lot. So they already have most of this.
Anyone have any more questions? Yeah, or members? Any members of the audience have any questions?
Well, one one question.
I just want to finish that. Uh, my thing is if it required. Town council in the beginning proved it, and this is going to require. We should probably go through if it's going to require the processes we went through in the beginning. Then it probably should probably repeat that. If you're going to be doing any work with. The other uh, lot next, you should probably go through the same process you went through in the beginning. You know, have the town council review it, have engineering review it, make sure that it's right before we pursue.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Engine engineering is um. If you're talking about, Tom, you're talking about a peer review?
No, I'm talking about if you're coming back, if you if the reason for us to be in, the reason for us to be involved. The reason for us to be involved and and doing this through a site plan review instead of a ASBills. Would be these kind of things that it requires all of these different aspects. It requires a peer review. It requires. Because you're changing the road access or you're changing the entrance. I don't know if that triggers a site plan or not. Uh, is that major change to do a one way in now um, or not? That's what we would have to do after it was presented to us.
Agreed.
And and uh, through the chair, um, Tom, uh, uh, and and Dennis, uh, when we have new designs, I'll certainly. Uh, take a look at them and compare them to uh, the site plan rules and regs and. Our our bylaws governing site plans and 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 parking um, and to. See what the triggers may or may not be and and present that to the board as well.
So this may be something. I'm up up at our next meeting.
Yeah, probably.
Which is until?
July eleventh.
Actually, July eleventh is early, probably the August one.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So does anyone else have any questions? Dave, you you okay? Is this all comfortable with you? Okay. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you. It's good to see you again. I miss your hot dogs. Haven't gone to cruise night yet this year.
Yep, every Tuesday.
I know, I know.
Thanks, Dennis.
So next on the agenda is um. To um.
Suspend.
Suspend. That was what I was looking at. Um, regular meeting and um. Can be in the public hearing on East Street Estates and if some division.
Yeah, so you um, the the petitioner is not here, uh, but the the board received. Our another request for continuance of the public hearing. I believe the revised dates, I sent the second one upon my request was August twenty second. Is that our meeting?
Uh, August eighth. Is the date that's in.
Is that the newest one?
Oh, no.
It was a slot. The shot clock.
Well, we don't have some August.
I think they were looking to extend the decision deadline.
So and so I had them extend obviously the the public hearing um, day, uh, continue the public hearing day to our August meeting. Uh, and then the extend the decision deadline beyond that.
Yeah, they so the letter says August eighth for the meeting and August thirty first for the division.
That was the first. That was the first one they sent. So I had them send a revised one that that actually reflected what our August meeting schedule was.
Hmm.
Um. Yeah, August twenty second.
Okay.
So I I have the the revised one here and I'll send that out.
So continuance to August twenty second, shot clock to one.
August thirty first. Um, and so I talked to. Kevin Demers, who's the who's been representing East Street Estates. He's the engineer. Um. Bring up my notes on that.
Does that mean we're going to send out? They're going to send out notifications then?
I mean, likely not. This this is, I imagine. This is probably the last request for a continuance for them to figure out what they're going to do between now and then. Because they their their redesigns, not redesigns, their uh. Costs regarding their wall design and the backfill and all that came back and it came back as an astronomical cost to them. So they want to know. They need to make an internal decision amongst themselves of how they're going to proceed with developments because it sounds like. It got um, their balance sheets all messed up um, with with getting those costs back. So so they're requesting this continuance. Um, extension of this deadline at this time to give them some time to think about that.
Okay.
So. My conversation with him was, well, then this is likely the last continuance, A, that you are even going to request. B, that I would suggest that the board even grant you.
Hmm.
And C. Uh, assuming that that this is the last request. It'll either be the board gives a decision August twenty seconds. Probably won't be a favorable one. Um, or they and they will likely be withdrawing. Probably sometime between now and then and deciding if they want to come back in the fall with a with new design.
Well, that's a month of hope. So if they do decide to move forward.
Yes.
You will remind them of their obligation to contact butters.
Yes.
Okay. So the butters would be coming to that meeting on the twenty second of August. If they decide not to, okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't be ready to even. I mean, we wouldn't have. This is if if they were coming in and they wanted to drop the puck and say, there's our final meeting for approval.
Yeah.
Then we wouldn't have anything for our reviewing engineer to look at.
Oh.
Yeah. I I mean, I will be prepared to vote.
I know what your vote is.
Yeah, and I I because well, I contacted my race this afternoon saying, geez, you know, our shot clock expires today. And up until I don't know what time we hadn't had a re- a request for a continuance.
Yeah.
So I think we ought to have that draft decision, you know, that people work on.
Well, I think we can just take the last one and.
Sure, so failure to prosecute.
Right.
In part, and also failure to address a number of issues, which are. So I think that will be good to have that.
We'd be prepared for that. And um, I think I think. At least the 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 engineer's understanding of those issues. Um, and so I'll make him aware of that as well.
Uh, Bob, this is Mr. The Chair, like the message for Paul. Uh, we could approve it subject to the retaining wall being removed. And then scheduling a second. Round.
In the house, in the street.
That's transit friendly, isn't it? Transit oriented, getting any closer than that. So.
So but yeah, regardless for for tonight, um, you do have a request to continue the public hearing to the August twenty second meeting with decision deadline to August thirty first. So should a decision either with an approval to remove the. The retaining wall uh, be given at that meeting um, or a denial, uh, we have time to get together a decision to file.
So I move that we we uh. We um, continue this meeting until August twenty second at seven fifteen. Is that okay? Uh, and extend the shot clock to August thirty first.
Okay, any discussion? I do have a question. We have a meeting on a for meeting on the twenty second. We're also meeting on August.
If they want a decision, if they don't withdraw and they want a decision from us on August thirty first, it will already have been written and it would be.
And we need to, we could schedule a hearing, you know.
Yeah.
For Thursday or Friday.
Right, okay.
And meet the deadline.
Okay. So any other discussions? Anyone on the remote that wants to? Okay.
And if it were favorable favorable. In the any, in in a, I would say off chance. Uh, they would, I mean, they would extend that decision until that many times.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so seeing there are no more comments, uh, so Margaret, hi, Paul.
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Tommy?
No. No, I would vote to not. I would vote to close the public hearing and vote. So no, I would not vote to continue the public hearing. As long as we've got three to do so.
You would then have to get in your car and drive down and help draft the decision tonight. And and then drive it to Denise's house and watch her stamp it before midnight.
I hear three yet votes beforehand, sounds good.
That worship passes four to one.
I can vote. Would you like to vote? Yes, I'll vote A. I'll I'll say yes. So, uh, okay, so. Four to one. Um, so we adjourn the public hearing and return to our regularly scheduled meeting. And next on the agenda is discuss potential zoning bylaws. Solar of zoning map change. Mr. Morrell, you're on.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm here with Sean Malone as well. He's a engineer representing me.
Hi, Ron.
I know this guy.
I've been before this board.
So we're, um, what you guys, I think you've seen is a proposal from us um. That shows a an area of a large section of the land being rezoned to a commercial industrial. Uh, since since the town. Has, um, you know, tight restrictions on where solo can do, where solo can go. Uh, it sounds like maybe this would be a good option for us. So as long it, as well as you can see from the plan, we have like a residential component as well.
Can you show us the plan and what?
Yeah.
Because I wasn't sure what I was looking at.
So you had three plans, you had three proposed lots there?
Yeah.
Yeah. And um, if I may, Rick, you want me just quickly walk them through uh, the plan that we have here?
Sure.
Okay, Michael, am I able to share?
Oh, do you want to share? I'll stop sharing. I already put it up.
Yeah. Think that'd probably be easier.
Okay.
Yeah, because then you can move your cursor around.
Right. Yeah, you should be able to share.
Okay. Um, so uh, I think you all see the plan now in front of you. Um, so this is uh, this is the plan that we have. Just to give a little orientation, we have uh, South Street here. Um, the was it the the end of South Street is is not too far from from here. Um, this is actually the Morel's house right here. And then this is about, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, it's about eighty five acres, Rick.
Yeah, just over.
Back here.
Yep.
And that's.
So it says eighty five acres in the backlands and then area shaded green or the total.
Well, no. That it that also includes this area up here.
Okay.
So the total parcel uh, known as Zero South Street is is about eighty five acres. Um, of that, uh, there are some wetland areas. Um, there's a stream that kind of crosses the site. Um, of that, uh, there are some wetland areas. Um, there's a stream that kind of crosses the site here. And then these shaded areas, this is all, uh, this gray hatch, this is all, um, approximate wetlands. Now, just to give some, um, uh, kind of bearing on this plan, this plan is, it, it's a huge parcel. The, this plan we developed using GIS, uh, mass GIS, um, uh, soil surveys, um, USGS, topo, and then, uh, some Army Corps information. So this is not an actual survey, the, the, the property boundary is, uh, is the true survey brown, boundary that we got from an old survey plan. But this is not a surveyed plan, just so you, you all understand.
The, can you show us on there where the, uh, where the Vernal Pool is?
I don't know the Vernal Pool, Rick. Do you know what that is?
Yes, um, the Vernal Pool is, you see the south, uh, property line, my, uh, my property, my, my residence? The, the, yeah, exactly. The Vernal Pool is, is almost if you drew a perpendicular line in the middle of that line, down is where the Vernal Pool is.
Yeah, in, in this little wetland on the north side of the existing driveway?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So, um, just, uh, I'll just give you a quick lay of the land. So, um, the rest of this, so this wetlands, this is all wooded area, the stream. There's an existing paved drive with two, uh, with a, with a covert here. And then also the driveway continues with a coverted crossing of the stream up here. And then the pavement ends somewhere in this area. And this all is kind of open former gravel pit. It's all been excavated, disturbed. Um, there's some residential properties up here to the north. This is all conservation land, uh, deeded to the town. We have a wetland here. And then this is, uh, private land to the south that's really kind of landlocked. It's not really developable. Um, and then there's some, uh, uh, Army Corps land here that's associated with the, uh, um, the dam project that was done years ago. So this red line, what you see here, this is, uh, an area where the Army Corps has flowage rights, um, which it's, it's, it's basically like a floodplain, like a hundred year floodplain. Um, so those are, those are kind of the constraints that we're working with. And what, uh, Rick would like to do is, uh, create a new roadway, meeting all the subdivision standards coming into the site in approximate location where the existing road is to minimize any disturbance beyond what, what's already been disturbed by the, the roadway there. Um, and then divide this 85 acres into four parcels. Three would be, uh, residential parcels, uh, meeting the, um, zoning requirements for the AG District, the agricultural zone, which they're in right now. And then this fourth parcel, which would include all of the backland here, uh, we would propose as a standalone parcel and, um, propose that that be converted to commercial industrial zone. And that's where the solar area would be. Would all be in this kind of landlocked area in the back. Um, so that's kind of the quick snapshot.
Can, can you, um, just, just out of curiosity, because it's, it doesn't actually impact flowage. Can you put solar in the flowage area without produ- producing, um, compensatory storage?
There, there may be, there may be some need for some compensatory storage for just the, you know, the, 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 the small structure, you know, supporting the solar, but there, there's actually quite a bit of land. All this area is all high ground, all high ground. Um, so quite a bit of land back there where we could, you know, excavate out to provide compensatory storage as necessary.
Hey, can I ask a gating question? What's compensatory storage? Are we talking about the flowage? Are we talking about electricity?
Basically, with the way the law, the, the, um, the way the, the Army Corps regs are written, if you put any kind of structure below the 269, you know, we all know about the 69, any kind of structure that, that causes any kind of fill, you know, but you have to dig a hole if that size somewhere else. So it's below the 269, so there's the same amount of water.
Okay.
Exactly.
But not replicating like.
It's not replicating a wetland, it's just replicating a hole.
A hole.
Yeah, to make sure that you're, you're, you're making up for displacement that you're adding.
Okay, thank you.
Question from, um, the chair, but from a planning board perspective, that, that's a contour line and anything underneath it, you would have to flood proof, either what you, whatever utilities you have under that line, is that correct?
Well, there, there's no, no habitable structures are allowed. Um, so that's why, you know, this is kind of a perfect place for, for solar, where all you have is just some metal structure. Um, but it certainly would have to be engineered to be able to, you know, withstand flowing water forces, things of that nature. But it, not, not waterproof per se.
And then, and but I would assume you put the pad up higher, uh, uh, on some of the higher land if you needed to have a.
For any equipment transfer, switches and things like.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a weird question, um, and I know we're not tied, just want to get it in my brain. The roadway for the subdivision is there, and that appears to be what's going to lead into the, uh, backlands where the solar farm is going to go. Um, there is a proximity to the Vernal Pool, and my question is, when they're bringing the, you know, structures in to create that solar farm, I assume that the trucks are going to be taking that route in. And so I'm just wondering about the width of the roadway.
That's, that's the.
At that end.
That's the road the trucks always use to go in and out in the sand.
But how wide is it? Because it's a lot wider the closer you get to the, so I just don't, you know, and you have the Vernal Pool, so I'm just a little bit. And I assume though.
I'll just add a little, uh, in- insight. The, the road is, it's paved probably for the first, uh, I'd say 600 feet. Uh, and that road has got to be, I'd say 15 feet wide. Uh, so, you know, it, like somebody mentioned, there, there was thousands of trucks that went in and out of that pit over the years. Uh, and yes, that Vernal Pool is close to the, to the, uh, beginning of the, uh, you know, up near the road.
But you said width, say one five feet or was it more than that?
Yeah, I think, I think asphalt is probably 15 feet and then the road is wide, you know, the, the material they brought, they, they brought the roadway up, it's probably 25 feet wide. Um, so it's, it's pretty wide.
So when they bring the panels in, uh, do they come in on a wide flatbed or how do the panels get brought in?
That's a good question. I'm not sure what they would bring them in on, but if they wanted to bring them in on a trailer, a tractor trailer, they could. It's not limited, you know, the, the radius entering is massive. Um, you know, they used to bring truck to trailers in and out of it with gravel.
Yeah. Okay, it just, yeah.
A question to the board, through the chair, is it better for spot zoning or to change the data table to allow this in all AR zones?
Good question, Tom. I, I, if we did that, I would say maybe it should be by special permit, because I think there are some AR zones. I mean, the, I think this is an ideal place for solar.
Right.
Um, to be honest, uh, but I think there are some AR zones that are not, not necessarily ideal places for solar.
I mean, if it's appropriate, I'd almost prefer this to be spot zoned, because, and one of the issues we've had is tearing down farce to put up solar farms. And this basically makes it situational, but that is looking very serious here, so I think.
Yeah, sorry, through the chair, we could, we can look into the parameters, uh, in case law of spot zoning. I mean, I think the, to the benefit of this proposal, I mean, yeah, if you're looking at it from the test of, are you isolating a particular, um, parcel for the benefit of that, that owner? Yeah, there could be an argument to be had for that, but if the, if the planning board is looking at, based on the discussion that I've already heard, if the planning board is saying, yeah, but this is a good location for this zone because of what it can support. We would like to see this zone instituted here in, 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 in these areas of town. And because we're looking at, I mean, that originally this is an 80 plus acre site, but with this back half of a section that is still over 60 acres, so it's a, it's a large area. Um, so I'm sure there's an argument either which way. We can look into that a bit more seriously.
Okay.
If you like.
Yeah.
It's not a yes or no.
Yeah, you're gonna have to get, in addition to Concom, you're gonna need to go to Heritage, I believe. I think there's, uh, I think there's speed, uh, endangered species in the area, but I think it's mostly turtles. And they can lay their eggs under petals, so.
If you ask a question, we'll be putting it in.
On, is there a sense, could, I mean, you do have, you know, I guess two neighborhoods that would be impacted. That was a Green and Russo Drive at the top and then the South Street neighbors on the bottom. Uh, i- is there a proposed limit of where the panels would be, where the tree cutting would be? Man, we rezone this and we just rezone it, somebody could go in and put whatever they wanted in there, I suppose, as long as it was commercial industrial, right?
It, it really is limited by, um, the, the wetlands are on the perimeter, um, some army constraints, the grading, so say on Green Lane side, i- if you've been in the pit, you, you know, the bottom of the pit, it say is at 255 elevation. The, the, the properties of Green Lane are at like 280. So, and then you have, you have a, a line of pine trees back there that, you know, they're not, they're on the, um, the, the owners of Green Lane. The solar farm is pretty much all low grade and nobody can see it, literally nobody can see it. So, there, no, there's no owners, no, no property owners on the south side or, you know, the east could, could ever see it.
Would you be able to maintain, this is just something I'm sure you'll hear from Concom, you know, there's that, there's the trail system that comes along the river and around Goss Pond there, which people walk, even though it's currently on private property. But, and so that might just be something that they'll ask about.
Yeah, it, it doesn't affect any of that, the trails, not one. It is all inside, like, like the beach, right? It's all just sand in there. All the trails are around the, the property line that the Army Corps manages, so you're, it doesn't, you never even come near that.
So.
This really sounds like, uh, excuse me, but the, one, the, the questions that we're asking you, uh, the board's asking you, sounds a lot like a special permit application.
That's, I mean, that's sort of where I was going, because I mean, I think I don't have a negative reaction to what you're proposing, if there was sufficient, you know, screening and, and things like that. We had, and this is South Street, right? We had a, a solar farm proposal on North Street, and that would have clear cut a whole hillside. And, you know, depending on who you ask, it would have been impacting two neighborhoods, that both neighborhoods could see, instead of trees, that see reflective solar panels.
Or trees.
No, I, I know, well, well, I mean, you look at, you look at it from the air there.
There, yeah, yeah, it's mostly around.
There, yeah, there is. So I guess we, I, I want to be sure that, you know, even though the intent originally is to put something in the bottom, uh, yeah, if, the next owner might say, well, geez, I'd love to put them up the slope too, and what's to stop that if it's?
The closest house is right here. Cause all of this is.
These.
Yeah, these guys, these guys up here, well, and this is Goss Pond, so that's not going to get touched.
Right.
And that's, as you just said, the slope coming down here, it's, it's so slim.
And I, 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 I think in the, the CI zone with, with this type of proposal, it would be before the planning board for a permit. It's not just pull the building permit and, and, and start going at it. We, we would be before you with a formal design and permit application.
And I've only walked down from, you know, up through the pit into Green Lane once, when it was the soccer field proposal 15 years ago. So I, 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 I think I, I have a good sense of it, but I just don't know if the, I mean, if you're limiting the proposal to the bowl as opposed to the slopes, that very well might be something that, that works. Um, and, and frankly, if I was a neighbor, I'd rather have, you know, four trucks a month going in, um, than what the alternatives have been and could be.
And were.
And were, right.
Uh, but, but, but one thing that doesn't make sense to me is that if we would go through the time and trouble of changing this zone to a commercial industrial, just to make it available for solar to be built, why wouldn't we work just as hard to make it eligible to be sold, but without the problems that can happen once you start changing zones? It would be a lot, it would just be allowed, simply allowed in this, but through the special permit process.
I, yeah, I would definitely say if we're going to be allowed, it should be, you know, if we're gonna, we could put special permit into the A and O.
I'm, I'm, I'm leaning that way too, just because you never know what hap- you know, if you give your zone it one way, then this project might change.
Right.
It might go away and someone else comes along.
That's right, whereas a special permit says, here are the limits of exactly what you can do. And it might be exactly what this applicant wants. I'm not saying, I'm not saying the result would be any different than what, what's being asked.
So the, through the chair, the board, if that's, if that's what the way that the board would be more inclined in going, um, you'd have to, so it's a, it's a table use change to switch, uh, this particular use category from N to PB, um, for special permit through the planning board for, uh, in the AR district. Based on the conversation so far, we really wouldn't want to unlock the potential of 90% of the town. Or, I mean, probably more realistically, 80% of the town, um, to be, uh, available for this type of use. So you'd have to think of special provisions, um, in order to limit, um.
Yeah, in our over 40.
Yeah, exactly.
Things like that.
Now, would it, would it, the, the change that you're contemplating to the, uh, the use table, would that be special meeting, same kind of process as a zoning change, or what would the process be?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Exactly.
But, and then you would have a special permit process afterwards, but you, you'd still have, I mean, even if we change the zone, the next day you'd have to apply for, uh, site plan and.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
There's, there are differences, Sean, but I, I mean, I think I'm leaning towards the one that gives us more, more of an ability to put this project in an envelope that works for everybody.
So I was, I was hoping through the chair that, um, e- even if this was, um, were to go forward as a potential petition, I was still going to look into ways in which we could alter the, the, um, zoning bylaw. Um, not specifically the way that we just discussed, but to address the issues that I brought up before. Um, because there still is the issue or potential issue that our bylaw doesn't, um, conform to Mass General Law, 48, Section 3, as far as, um, you know, the.
But it almost does.
The exemptions, it almost does. The exemptions, the exemptions that are, are, are given to this type of use. And, you know, as I was explaining before, there's very little guidance from legislature, very little guidance judiciary as far as what a conforming bylaw actually looks like. Um, so.
Is there a way we could, you know, do these, um, parallel?
Yeah, that's, that's basically what I'm saying, yeah, to, to look at them sort of in parallel. So then like even, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Cause that's like a whole larger.
And that's it too, is then, and who knows how long it's going to take us to get through settling the, um,
Yeah.
the details of that, even, even, even if we're just talking about changing the, the table uses, right? There's going to be a lot of detail, uh, that has to go into that to restrict it so that you don't see solar farms everywhere in town, which I'm sure is not the intent.
Okay. Okay.
Well, we want, yeah, I mean, our decisions would need to be well tailored, obviously, and the, you know, the, the last one might have been very inappropriate in, in, in the area, because it was, it, it would visibly impact the neighborhoods. Whereas at least as advertised, this would visibly impact zero neighborhoods. And, uh, uh, one other question, small one. My understanding is that these solar arrays and the, uh, attendant equipment, they don't put out any noise, is that right? It's, it's, it's a quiet system?
I think, I think, and I don't speak on behalf of the applicant through the chair, uh, in my experience of them, and I've, I've visited a number of them, I've never heard anything. I think the noise is more of a concern if you're doing battery storage and things like that on, on the site. Uh, Rick, are you familiar at all with that?
You know, I'm really not, um, but again. The, the distance to anybody, it's quite large. Um, so I'm, you know, we, we've heard batteries humming and things like that in, in. You know, I'm, I'm a general contractor, so I, I hear a lot of things, but it's. It's not likely to be, uh, an issue, but I, I definitely, it's a good question. Um, I don't have a decimal reading on what they generate, um, but it's probably something we could find out.
Set underneath a three hundred foot, uh, wind turbine, I can.
You could really.
Yeah, well, that keeps people up at night, and to shut those down.
Cause I didn't hear much, I mean, you heard a bit of a hum, uh, obviously it's a completely different use, but then you heard when the blade came. Near you, but that was about it, you know, your farm.
Actually, it controls your emotions and.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, getting, you know, getting a sense from you guys as to, you know, how, as if we're progressing down here, you know, what would? Setbacks look like, things like that, that would be, yeah, that would be helpful. Um, it sounds like you, you don't have much concern, and I think maybe you could convince us that, that we shouldn't, and the neighbors shouldn't, most importantly. Uh, have a lot of concern with, with the, uh, the limits of work and, and, uh, sight lines and things like that.
I think, I think everybody should go down there and see what we have. Um, you get a real sense of the isolation that this location would bring. Uh, Margaret nailed it, you, you really couldn't find a better spot. Um. Yeah, I, I would say you'll go see it.
No, and, and, and I, I agree with you, if you put one panel in the middle of that property, you, nobody's gonna have a problem with it. But it's how close to the edges are you gonna get?
And if you went, if you went to the edge, you would, nobody could see it. To the edge, to the property, and well, you know, we wouldn't do that, it's, we need a buffer, but you, nobody could see it.
And, and, and I think, uh, I did read in your, your, your regs, I don't know if it was a solar district, I can't remember, this is a month or so back, but. You do have a requirement of a seventy-five foot setback from any residential properties. Um, to a solar field, so, um, certainly we'd, we'd be respecting that.
Yeah, in CNI, this is.
That's what I said, but pretty much, pretty much, we're gonna ask you to address all of the impacts, whether they be sound, lights, traffic. Uh, whatever, whatever setbacks, we'll be able to, to address them all.
Much wetting here.
Um, just, uh, kind of point of a clarification about what we're talking about now. Um, are we talking about getting into some of these weeds to? Figure out a way to, you know, establish a permit path here, or are we talking actual, the actual permitting and, and design review of this project?
Sounds like we're doing both.
Cause there's, there's, there's kind of a, a wild difference in the amount of work between the, uh, the two processes.
Right, so the, the board needs to help identify, well, you, you can, if you want to help identify. Um, e- exactly what Sean was just saying, uh, the path forward, uh, to allow for an application forward that would. Require site design conversations, such as what we're having.
I think we have to s- start with the bylaw, with the zoning bylaw change, because if the town doesn't approve a bylaw change. Then our hands are tied, right? Well, we, we were doing special permit.
But we.
But, but, but that which is the M, it's not allowed in this area, okay, so we would have.
Can we make that a motion to ask the, um, uh, town planner? To report to the planning board with a, a process to do that?
And. Yeah, but before you make your motion through the chair, that, that's totally, uh, fine, I just wanna make it, uh, something clear for, for, uh, uh, Ms. Morell is. That, um. Would you suggest he still, I mean, cause this is, uh, this proposal is, it would be on his own volition as a property owner, as a potential, um. Uh, warrant article, right, um, for zone change, uh, so it like, like. Chair was saying earlier, we could have possibly concurrent processes, um, so. Without advising him of whether or not he should continue, maybe you wanna, maybe you want to do that. But, um, he also may, might wanna keep this as an option to, should maybe we put something forward in the fall. And it doesn't come to fruition or fails a town meeting.
Well, either way, you need a zoning change.
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent.
So the applicant can decide that he wants to get nine friends and propose. A zoning change to, uh, make that commercial industrial. And at the town floor, all the questions that we're raising are gonna be raised that night. And. You're gonna get, and the planning board will have a hearing and will say, we have, we agree or we don't. Or you can do it with, you know, the, the zoning change to allow it in, you know, AR.
It sounds like. Through the, through the chair, that should. Should this proposal come before this board, uh, in a public hearing process, and I'm not asking you obviously to give any. Uh, um, determination, because we're not in that public hearing process, but I'm, I'm hearing. A general favorability based on the intent of what the proposal is. But not necessarily, there's, there are at least some questions or some doubt as to the actual zone change. To CNI because the other potential uses that that would unlock. Is that correct, or?
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I, I think it seems like. People are leaning more towards the change in the table of uses with some restrictions, which might come from reviewing our current solar bylaw, so. It could be what we really need is to be starting that process of getting ready for fall with a change in the table of uses and, and a change in the solar bylaw.
Uh, and I, I agree with that, and I would second that, but, and the other thing is the limitations, so. We have certain limitations in the, like, a certain, if you, a certain number of units, I think it's just forty-four units being built. In town, the building inspector has the right to delay. More units, there are, there are some restrictions, and we could apply that separately with. With solar farms so that we couldn't, or, or, or pot farms or any of these things that, so we don't, we don't get to. That, uh, we could always put that as a, a two-sided, uh, approach to that.
Yep, I think we should talk about things in the bylaw, but minimum acreage and things like that as well.
Let me, I mean, if, if the app, the citizen is looking for a, kind of a warm and fuzzy, I'd, I'd be more comfortable with the table, a proposed table of use changes. Towards a special permit process that gives the planning board. More ability to, you know, protect the town, than just changing it to CNI and.
Yeah.
You've got a, a by right use, yeah.
But, but, for clarification through the chair, uh, it's a by right use for two acres or under of panels in the CNI.
Oh, that's, that was just to get that green community?
Yeah, probably, yeah, but, but it's special permit for over two acres, which I mentioned, given this site. So it would be a special process, but you understood.
Oh, no.
Um, if, if I could propose, would it make sense for? Us to table this discussion for two weeks and maybe give, uh, Rick and I and Michael to put our heads together a little bit and. Um, try to, try to go through this a little bit more?
Well, tonight you heard that the majority of the board is in favor of, of not smart zoning, but putting in the table of uses. Putting it through a, a special permit process. And as you can see, the planning board immediately went into the questions, how far away a protection of this, it's a great process. So, um, I think you can proceed from what I hear. In a table of use change.
But, and, and, and if you ask, can we come, can you come back and keep talking to us, we, we love talking things through, so. I'd suggest that's a good thing.
I'll, um.
The twenties, August twenty, does your meet now?
July eleventh is our last meeting. And our meeting after that is August twenty-second. Um, I'll do my best to get some sort of draft, um, together for the, the board for the next meeting with grace of soul.
And when, when, when would the warrant article, uh, be due?
Probably September, but we had, that hasn't been announced yet.
Okay.
It's usually September.
Well, that's when the town meeting.
Yeah, right, so we need the public hearing. Yeah, and we need the warrant article. Yeah, we need the warrant article, and we need the public hearing vote before that, so.
And there may be some argument that this is important enough to only say for the annual.
That's, you know.
I don't, yeah.
I can concoct that argument on your behalf if you'd like.
Yeah, I would, huh?
I said I can concoct that argument on your behalf if you'd like.
Yeah, no, I would very much like, um, yeah, I mean, I think this is, I think the ball town meeting would be good. Okay. And I have one question for Mike, I think you said a while ago, when, I mean, we don't know what is happening, um. You know, with, you know, because we don't have any guidance on the way, but I think that you seem to think that. If there was a good faith attempt to allow solar farms in. That that was rather than communities are just trying to keep them out, right?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
That's looked at.
For sure, if you're, if you're relaxing your restrictions on it and expanding the. Locations that it can go, and I, I have to imagine that would be looked favorably upon, uh, depending on what judge you get.
Yeah, cause I think you were looking at percentages and that type of thing.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Alrighty. So you guys happy?
Well, what do you think?
Well, you got what you need, let's put it that way, you got what you need.
Yes, I got what we need, thank you very much for your time.
Well, you're smiling, so I would say you're happy, but.
And that requires a town vote, so.
Yeah.
It always will, but, and you can always, you can always, I mean, you can't bypass this completely, because we, we do need to hold a public hearing, but you can always get this done without us. Just go get your bylaw changed and get town meeting to approve it.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly.
Might not be as easy that way, though. You need the, you need, need the vote.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would be nice having the support of the planning board and whatever Rick moves forward with, that would be my recommendation to him.
I concur.
Okay.
Well, we'll put you guys on the agenda for the eleventh, and let us know if you wanna push it to the twenty-second of August. Is that right?
All right.
Sounds great.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, folks.
Good night.
Bye.
Okay. So now we move on to discuss potential zoning map change, Kiwanis Beach Road, Will Marquise, is that how you pronounce your last name?
Uh, Marquess, but that's fine. No worries. Um, so this is my mother's property, my mother and father lived at fifty-two Elm Street. Um, the old Henry Walker House for many years. And so a few years ago, we went through the process because, um, Kiwanis Beach Road was actually on there, was there. Under their, or over their land, um, and so we. My sister and I had Gary and Helen on, um, run the lines so that we could donate the road to the town. In preparation for my mother selling her house, she's at the Willows in Westboro, and. So we did that, um, my mother sold her house. And what we're looking at doing now, and, you know, I, I'm always hesitant, I've been involved in many. Uh, boards in, in, in Sutton where I live, um, you know. The right side of Kiwanis Beach, my mother still owns a little over six and a half acres there, and it goes down along the road. Um, it goes behind that last house that's on the right and, uh, at the very end abuts the fields. Uh, um, the town land that make up the, the, um, soccer field. And so Gary and Helen, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, we're looking at the Mass Mapper Property Tax Parcel Map that we, we received, I think you're talking about parcel zero. Inside. Uh, yeah, I think it looks like that's what.
Yeah, yep, yep, that's it, that's exactly it, yep, cause I can see that small pond my parents had made, um. That's still there on fifty-two, that pond was kept with the original house, um, so, yeah, that's perfect, that's, that's the lot. Um, there is some wetland, um, closer to Elm Street. Um, where that pond that, as I say, my parents created, um, drains out, it goes out into my mother's property and then goes under Kiwanis Beach Road. Um, so there is some wetland we know there, um, but. It's kind of odd the way the town has done the zoning here, um. The left-hand side is SRB, which is a twenty-five thousand square foot. Um, lot requirement, um, the right side of Kiwanis Beach Road is all AR. So, um, the right side has an eighty thousand square foot requirement, um, and the result of that is that if my mother wanted to. Um, sell house lots. She could get two out of that, um, I've looked at. Literally every water body in the town, um, and I'll, I'll contrast that with, with Taft Pond and Shore Drive, which. Granted, those were probably made as, um, you know, existing non-conforming or something when. The, the zoning changes were put in place, but what we'd love to be able to do, and, and my goal here tonight is simply to. You know, try to get a read, because, uh, if we wanted to get three house lots, we'd love to get a third one. Um, to help my, my mother financially, um. So we were curious about, you know, getting the right side of Kiwanis Beach converted to SRB, um, and at the same time. It, interesting, the first part of this meeting with the parking challenges and, and having, um, the, the lots, uh, there at Kiwanis Beach, uh, uh, actually mentioned. Um, it, it might be possible that we could donate some of the land that abuts the town. Property down there, uh, for additional parking, I don't know if there'd be an interest, and my goal is not to get, you know. To, you know, try to get people to go on the record, but I wanted to kind of get your feedback as to. What your thoughts were about that type of process where we would try to get a third house lot in there, um.
Uh, I'm asking a question, uh, to the chair, if I may. How far back with the, how far back with the house speed, that third one from the road?
Um, we would still, uh, nothing has been formally planned, we've not asked Gary and Helen on to do anything, um, before we spent any. We would, we would still, we, we would still, you, uh, fall under all the required setbacks and everything, um.
Well, my, my, um, my thought is, and, and I like to, uh, opinions on this, is that we're, you're allowed to go thirty feet into a. Um, a more restricted zone, and AR is a, a more restricted zone, you can build less, it's a larger zone required, so. You could go thirty feet in anyway, and I'm wondering if it wouldn't be an easier process to go for a zoning board of appeals variance on the distance in. Uh, allowing the zone so that you would go in whatever, if it's fifty feet or seventy-five feet into that zone to allow. Uh, the, the third house, as opposed to changing zones and going to a town meeting to change all that, just a thought.
No, that's very, that's very helpful, thank you, I, I think that might. Make a lot of sense, I mean, you, you know, I, we're, we're not trying to, um. You know, jam, uh, as many houses in here as possible, um, but, you know, um. The Willows is expensive, um, we'd like our mother to be able to stay there if possible until her, the end, and, um. You know, we're just trying to come up with a creative way here, and, and that was one that jumped out at us, given the, the difference in AR versus SRB across the street.
Mike, can you show us the zoning map again that you just had up?
Yeah, I'm trying to bring up of my, uh, mapping program, it'll be a little bit more easier to, um. To see the, the lot lines with the zoning, so just, uh, give me a second.
It's not just the one lot, that, it's not just their lot, that's AR.
Same, yeah, over there.
Tommy, I don't know, can, are you able to see the screen, just, is it, if their, their property is, it looks like. Entirely on the AR side of the road, so they don't have any property on the SRB. Zone, it's not like they're touching, I haven't looked.
On the other side of the road?
It's on the other side of the road, is what the. It's on the other side of the road, is what the, what this Marcus is saying.
SR, SRB is the left-hand side of the road.
So as far as I'm concerned, the road is a right-of-way, the lot line is in the middle of the roadway between the two. So taking the center of the roadway, going to the right, uh, or to the east, whatever section it is, you would have to get a waiver on more than going more than thirty feet into the, uh, uh, more restricted zone, uh, to get your third house. It's just, that would be my most.
On the road now. I think we, I think gave us the road a couple of years ago.
Yes.
Was, was that, was that a, a transfer of the fee interest in the road to the town? Think it might have.
Either way, either way, we'd have to establish a, uh, a lot line frontage. We would have to establish frontage and we would go twenty-five in, twenty-five feet in from the center of the traveled way. So, uh, that's how we would, we would have to establish the frontage on the property is from the center of the right, right-of-way or the roadway. So those lines, those lines could be used, uh, to the zoning board as opposed to a town meeting to change a zone.
I'd rather, I, I'm not sure, but I would like your interpretation to be correct. How's that? It's an easier, it's an easier problem.
Okay.
I'm not, I just don't know, I'm not a land use lawyer, so I, I'm just guessing. Tom's got a better handle on it, I think. So Tommy, you're, you're looking at it there, right? Can you see the green and the tan, Tom?
Yes, I can.
So their lot is the one that says Kiwanis Beach Road.
So how much frontage is on, because it's a parcel that's got a house on it, that's at the end of it.
That's the house lot, that's fifty-two.
That's fifty-two, okay.
That's on the Elm Street end.
Yeah.
Yeah, and my, I, my argument would be is if you discontinued that roadway, left side and right side would meet in the middle.
No, I'm looking the other way, I'm looking, it's a lot right here, so there's a whole snub here that's not, doesn't have frontage.
Right.
Correct.
So I'm trying to figure out how much frontage you have along that area.
Yeah, I'm looking, no matter which way you come into that property, the density would be, uh, an AR's density. Whether they come in from the back or from another side. You still would have.
I wanna say it's five hundred feet. I'm looking at the Gary and Helen drawing that they did originally. Actually, it's longer, excuse me, it's two nineteen plus four hundred plus ninety-seven, so.
Fact to figure out is why did they, they can do that anyway, they see acreage, there's six point five acres. And it's the front.
Three one eighties.
Yeah, so I don't understand why they need anything from us. If they only wanna put three housing lots.
Why can't these be three acres?
Because, because of the wetland that's in the corner, uh, that abuts fifty-two Elm Street. That would require a larger proportion of that six acre, six point six five acres. And Gary and Helen felt there, we'd only be able to get two house lots.
Okay, so how big is the wetlands?
Well, you can see the pond in this, at fifty-two Elm, that, um, blue circle, if you will, just below, to the right of the cursor on the screen right now. It, the water flows out of that pond to the north essentially, crosses into my mother's land and flows down along. And just at about the curve in Kiwanis Beach Road, where, uh, it starts to curve to the left, that's where it goes under Kiwanis Beach Road. And so that right-hand side is, is substantially wetland.
I'm still confused though, because there's a pond there, but that can still be part of a lot.
And the pond's on fifty-two, right?
It's that little blue lot, yeah.
Correct, the pond is, the pond is contained within fifty-two.
Yeah, because in order to get enough upland on one of the lots.
But a house, so the house is gonna go up here.
So all three of them are gonna have to go in that one little area in the middle? So all three, I'm, I'm just, I'm having a hard time looking at these maps, so.
So if you put the, if you put one house on the uplands, it's gonna be this close and now you can't fit two more to the, to the.
So they put one on that side of the uplands and one on that side of the uplands? And then one through a large lot.
Gary and Helen has looked at where the wetlands are, it sounds like, instead of doing, you can't.
They still get to a large lot, frontage on the back, on the.
If you did a large lot, frontage, you're not gonna get three houses, they're trying to.
No, but if you did one here, you could get the reduced frontage.
Yeah, three times the acreage, though.
Okay.
That's a pretty drastic change in, in density from, from one to, from SRB to AR.
Yeah.
On the same river.
Yeah. Does, does Kiwanis Road, it doesn't have an exit, right? It just, you go on Elm Street and then you're gonna turn around and go back out on Elm Street, right?
That's correct, it's a dead end, yeah, it dead ends at the, at the, at the town beach.
Yeah. Haven't been there in years, so I forgot.
Okay, well, we can explore the, the, the variance on the distance and I, I, that's a, an approach I had not contemplated. So thank you, I appreciate that. And I mean, does anyone, I, I, if anyone has a, a drastic concern or says, boy, this would be a real problem here. You know, I'm, I'm happy to, I wanna hear that, I mean, we're not looking to, you know, as I say, we're not looking to, you know, come in with an apartment building. But if we could, could, if there was a way to get a, you know, a third house, that would be, uh, that'd be great.
One concern I, I look at is, you know, on the map we're looking at, there's lots numbered one, next to, next, your, your house is, your, your lot land that we're talking about, there's fifty-two bordered by zero. To the right of both fifty-two and zero is a lot that starts on Elm Street and goes back. And it's numbered one, it's on Sider Mill Road. If we rezoned SRB, does that lot one become two buildable lots as opposed to one? And, you know, why, there would be a concern we open zone there too.
There's, there, there.
There's a lot of properties in that immediate area that would probably want us to continue with what we're doing if we're rezoning. You know, zero across Elm Street there is a big lot.
And then there's something on town.
Yeah, there's, there's all sorts of properties that could benefit from rezoning. I guess we'd need to know who else is gonna get extra houses. And when do we say, you can have an extra house lot, but you can't? You know, that's, that's the problem with the, you know, it's gotta make, gotta be fair for everybody.
Is there potential for doing a false three-house subdivision in there? Especially, he raised the possibility of giving some of the land of town, which fits the community.
But then they would, they'd still need the acreage.
Right, I mean, the town, the town benefits from the Marquises family doing what they did last time. And that's why the town voted, you know, it was in everybody, it was in both sides' best interest to do what we did on Kiwanis. So it was good and, and I appreciate that he's saying, hey, I'd consider, you know, some, some land down at the end, which might alleviate what is tough parking on a Saturday, um, so.
That's a valid.
Right. Um, but I always got a spot though.
Yeah.
Um, so I'd look at, I just don't know how we could, I, I'd be concerned, I guess I'd wanna know more about what other impacts would there be and where would we stop with the.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, you don't want this to be just the first domino of, of six more, I, I respect that.
So the, through the chair, the, the definitely, definitely, if that's a concern, the best way to approach it would be through a, a variance request to the zoning board. Because the zoning board, in their decisions, they don't set precedence, I mean, legal, they don't set precedence, right? There, there's the perception of precedence for sure, for sure.
And it might not be, you know, an acreage, they, you know, the zoning board has a hard time with acreage, um, variances. Um, and, but, but maybe it is just the way you're gonna kind of config, I don't know, if it's what. Yeah, that maybe that. It's easier to get around.
But it's not a use variance.
Right now, it's still, it's still residential, I mean, that's okay. But I think spot zoning is, is tough. And then I think if we were gonna, you know, say that you only had to have, you had to have less frontage, that's, that's an easy one to challenge, your neighbors might not. Um, but if there's some way that, if that, you know, you, you needed some other relief, um, and maybe asking, uh, Gary and Helen, what relief? You know, what are the various reliefs that would work for you? You know, one might be to have less frontage, but one might be just to have, you know, the eighty percent rule relieved and, or accessing your, you know, your lot through your frontage, uh, a change there. There, you know, there could be, there could be other ways to skin the cat that are easier to get the approval of whatever board.
Sure. Okay.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
So, um, to, with regard to the, to comments about spot zoning, again, I sort of have the same take on this one as, as in the last one. Yeah, you can, you can make the argument that you're changing the zoning to benefit, um, a particular property owner. But in this case, unlike the last case, um, the, the SRB is there and you, you are extending an existing, um, zone that touches this lot. Um, so you're not treating a lot in isolation, um, separate from everything else around it. The, the last case had the benefit of being a very large lot. But in this case, it's, it's adjacent to, uh, an existing zone.
Then you got that same argument for the next one.
Absolutely, it doesn't address that, it's specifically addressing the spot.
Yep. Yes, it's not in, it's not the center of the bullseye.
Yeah.
It's, it's the moving of an edge. But do you, what about that, you know, what about that land across the street that's a big lot? You know, what about, you know, all of a sudden, it not only becomes buildable for one trophy lot, but maybe if you change it to SRB, it's, it's a twelve lot subject. That's a big, that's a big change.
And my guess is with how vocal the folks up there are, they would never get through town meeting if we're going for zoning change.
Yeah.
You know, so I think.
That's helpful to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, my, my guess is that, you know, I suggest you be talk to your engineer and see if any thoughts he has about becoming creative.
Which would still need relief, but.
Yeah.
What, what path?
Yeah, and if this, those wetlands are creating a hardship for the creation of a third lot, then that's the necessary ammunition that you need to, to go through a zoning board.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, uh, is your parents' house lot still held in common with the lot that we're talking about? Or the house lot gets sold?
It got sold.
No, it got sold.
I looked it up.
So maybe that, yeah, maybe that helps you with the, with the hardship issue. It's not your land, it's, you know, it's their wetlands, it's fifty-two's wetland that's causing the issue.
They caused all this problem, yeah.
Yeah. You, you appreciate the irony, but it, you know, you're, you're trying to give them something to hang their hat on.
Yep.
Understood, yeah, who created that pond?
Yeah.
That, that sincerely, thank you very much. This is exactly what I was hoping to have, just a, an informal discussion and, and try to learn, you know, some of the issues and challenges and, and you've more than met my expectations. So sincerely, thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Good, thank you, thank you.
And well, uh, we, we can be in touch, uh, give me a call, we can.
Okay.
Or touch base at some point to go over your options.
Great, thank you very much, good night, everybody.
Night, good night. Other topics that we really anticipated, the chairman, four minutes and things. Just one, it's not a real topic, but I still haven't scheduled to go away, by Gary.
Can we have it?
I think you were about to reach out to Chris.
Let's reach out to Gary, I'm away for the next two weeks, but.
Yay, yeah, and I'm away for a long time. I work out of the key.
Awesome, I'll be waiting.
So, um, but we can squeeze something in maybe that week when you come back and when I go away.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And remember, they don't, they don't have to be there.
Yep, but Gary does, we need Gary for it, they need Gary, the rest of us can stand up, fight some trade. So anyways, okay, any other items you need to discuss? And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Tell me.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, Margaret?
Hi.
Paul?
Yep.
Ken?
Hi.
Tom?
Yeah, and well done.
And me, I. I, yeah, yeah, yeah.